The informational meeting will begin in one minute.
Okay, I'll call this meeting, our informational meeting, Tuesday, June 13th to order. And welcome to everybody here at Carnegie Hall and watching us on TV or through the web streaming. First item on our agenda is City Council Open Discussion. Is there any open discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilor Starr.
Thank you, Councilor. This next weekend, on June 17th, the Neighborhood Association that is forming in Norton Acres is having a picnic in Lacy Park from 1 until 5 o'clock. We'll burn some hot dogs and the Parks Department is providing some games for kids. The most important part is that the community in that neighborhood is getting together to know one another, to promote crime prevention, to take a look and really step up of what they can do to make their neighborhood better, what they can do to be better citizens in the city of Sioux Falls, and have a little fun and get to know each other as the afternoon goes on. So I'd invite everyone on their behalf to join us from 1 to 5.
Great. Any other items? Councilor Rolfing.
Yes, I just, I thought this was a good time to let people know that something I've been working on for about two and a half years now is the Midwest Regional Soccer Tournament that's coming to town the 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th of June. We have approximately 5,000 people moving to Sioux Falls for four days. About 13,000 room nights will be spent here in Sioux Falls. This is the largest sporting event and possibly the largest event when you consider all the impact, the economic impact of about $17 million that the city has ever held. And so I just wanted to let people know, especially those that are listening, the retailers out there, they will be swamped. And so staff up. It's a good thing to have to staff up with number of people in town from all over the Upper Midwest. And we should have a blast. I know a lot of people are helping, but if you do, if you would like to volunteer, please give the Dakota Alliance Soccer Office a call at 332-5911, 332-5911. And they will hook you up with a slot to help because we do need 500 volunteers to pull this off. So please, please come volunteer and please come out to the fields and watch. And we'll have, we're going to have a big press conference on this tomorrow to announce it also. But that's basically what I had. Come help and come enjoy.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Rolfing, and thank you for your efforts in bringing this event to our city as well as the board's efforts and the effort on part of all of the volunteers.
Yes.
Councilor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the, kind of the thrill and an honor to attend the press conference last Thursday, Sanford's announcement that the Senior PGA Tour will be coming to town. And I had got to live out a lifelong dream that one of my heroes, Jack Nicklaus, was here. That was kind of an out-of-body experience. But it's neat, not only, I think, what it's going to do for our city because it talked about, obviously, we're going to have, you know, speaking like that with softball, everything else we have coming. I can't even imagine the tourism numbers and that this will do. But they had made a point to talk about just kind of the charitable contributions that follow these events that go to different cities, millions of dollars and things that will go to very good causes as this comes to town next year. So it's kind of hard to picture when you look at the course and the parking and all this, how they're going to pull it all off, but they've got a plan and it was kind of fun to be there and I'm looking forward to that. So it was a lot of fun. Should be good for Sioux Falls.
Absolutely. Thank you.
They will need volunteers also.
Yes, they will.
Any other comments for open discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to move ahead with our presentation, our one and only presentation. And it worked out well that we didn't have anything originally scheduled because we had discussed and then I had suggested that we could take a look at a Paramedics Plus Contract 101. And maybe at some point in the future, we could even have a 201 and a 301 and maybe even get up into the upper graduate studies as necessary. But we're looking forward to being educated on the intricacies of this contract because it is very complex. And again, we look forward to what you have to present for us, Director Franken, as well as from your staff.
Well, thank you, Council Chair. That's spoken like a true teacher. I appreciate that. Again, yes, at last week's Council informational meeting, you did indicate that you had an interest and desire to do kind of a Contract 101, which is the contract between Paramedics Plus and the city of Sioux Falls. Julie Charbonneau is here. She's our Quality Assurance Coordinator for our EMS system. And she'll provide you with that contract review. And then if we can get through that in its entirety, I'll come back up and then we can start doing some questions and answers at that time. We've got a lot to cover, though. We kind of went old school on this, so you have information in front of you. We didn't have time to, with the amount of information we have to share, do a PowerPoint presentation and that kind of thing. So again, bear with us with the old-school presentation, but Julie will be going through the document that you have before you and hopefully you'll find it beneficial. I'll also warn you in advance that when Tom called to schedule this, we kind of together took a wild guess at how much time you could perhaps tolerate in this kind of 101, but it will go longer than 20 minutes, I will tell you, as we prepared after that and have been working on it. I know it's going to take longer than that. So I just want to let you know that in advance. And so with that, I think I'll go ahead and have Julie come up and we'll get started. Thank you.
Welcome, Julie.
Good afternoon. Julie Charbonneau, Emergency Medical Quality Assurance Coordinator in the Health Department, or MQAC, as my friends call me. So I'm here this afternoon to review the current ambulance contract. I'd like to start with some history of the contract, very briefly. Several of you were on the council when this contract was being developed. And so you received regular updates during the process. For those of you who weren't on the council at the time, I've met with you after you joined the council to cover that material. So I apologize if this seems redundant, but I want us all to start on the same page. So going back several years, the previous contract, ambulance contract here in Sioux Falls with Rural Metro was due to expire in 2015. An audit of that contract by the city's internal auditor was done in 2013 in preparation for next steps. A couple of the audit recommendations were to do a request for proposals or an RFP for the next contract because competitive procurement had not been done and to engage expert assistance with that RFP project. The council approved that audit and appropriated funds for assistance, and so we undertook those steps within the Health Department. The city engaged a consulting firm who helped review the current system, gained stakeholder input, and used that input to develop an RFP. The stakeholder group included elected officials, Metro 911, police, fire, health, hospitals, hospital systems, the REMSA Medical Board and the REMSA Board, who all gave input into the standards and qualifications that were then written into the RFP document. The RFP process and content very closely follows industry best practices as outlined in this industry guide called EMS Structured for Quality: Best Practice in Designing, Managing, and Contracting for Emergency Ambulance Service. So it's kind of the guide in the industry. And I have just one copy and I thought you may like a copy, so I've actually ordered one for each of you. They'll be in later this week and I'll see that they get to you. So the RFP that was developed with all that input was released in 2014, I believe it was in July, with proposals due in October of 2014. Those proposals were scored by a team of national experts and local representatives from hospital systems and a representative from the city council. Just so you know, REMSA did not participate in the scoring, nor did I. We were mere observers for that scoring process. That scoring went to Jill Franken, the Public Health Director, who then made a recommendation to the city council to enter into a contract with Paramedics Plus. That was approved in February of 2015 and implemented in May of 2015. So the first day of this contract was May 21, 2015. The contract itself is made up of several parts: an ordinance, a contract, the RFP, RFP addendums, which form what I would call the backbone of the contract, plus the proposal submitted by the contractor. And I have that here. These two binders are actually the proposal and the appendices. All the rest of it is printed out and you have it tabbed there. I didn't include this because it makes for a 700 and some-page document. So it is all available, all available on Sire from the meeting where it was approved. That would be February 10th of 2015. So if you ever need any of the documents electronically, that would be where you can find them. I do want to point out that there were a few contract addendums and you have those also in your document. Addendum 2 is the one we will talk about. That's an important part of the agreement. During the RFP process, there was a pre-proposer conference, which in complex procurements, apparently, that's typically done. So any organization planning to submit a proposal or interested in submitting attended that conference in order to ask questions and hear clarifications. Five potential proposers were there. Four ended up submitting. Based on input and discussion, Addendum 2 was added and we'll note where that updated and clarified the content of the RFP. As I said, official copies of all the contract documents can be found on Sire. You have paper copies and I did provide some for the public as well. So let's delve into our many pages here. The first document is Ordinance 13-15. That's part of Chapter 124, the Surface Ambulance Service Ordinance. It's very straightforward. This was the ordinance that granted the exclusive franchise and basically formed the container for all the other documents. So I'm not going to go over that. That was the purpose. The next document that you have there is a contract. That's about 17 pages. Standard contract language, standard sections, begins with the whereas's, some general provisions, the grant of the exclusive franchise. On page three, scope of service. Continuing on, an important point to note when we get to page six, Section 5 at the bottom of that page, that's the term of the agreement. So this is a five-year contract. So the contract as it stands expires May 20th of 2020. There is a potential earned extension. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Section six, on the next page, page seven, I wanted to highlight the section regarding compensation. The grantee, or contractor, will operate the EMS system and provide the services as defined herein without any subsidy from REMSA or the city. The primary means of grantee compensation will be through fee-for-service reimbursement of patient charges. All rates and charges for services by the grantee shall be approved by the city council and established by ordinance. So that basically establishes this as a no-subsidy system. No tax dollars go to fund the services provided by Paramedics Plus. Other contract parts here address quality of service, performance security, how the contract ends, the indemnification, the standard civil rights terms. Much of this language is also included in the RFP and so we'll cover the pertinent points when we get there. I also do want to highlight Section 14 at the bottom of page 13. The relationship of the parties. It is understood and agreed that the grantee operates as an independent business and is contracting to do work according to its own methods without being subject to the control of the city except as to the product or result of the work. The relationship between the city and grantee shall be that as between an independent contractor and city and not an employer-employee relationship. The contractual interest of the city is to ensure that the services covered by this franchise agreement shall be performed and rendered in a competent, efficient, and satisfactory manner. That basically covers that 17-page contract. The next document you have is the RFP. It's titled Request for Proposal: Surface Ambulance Service Exclusive Operating Area. And that begins with about a five-page table of contents. And I would like to just take a minute to let you look through that table of contents because I think if you familiarize yourself with some of the language and topics there, that will help us as we move as rapidly as possible through these sections. So the first section, Section 1, includes a system overview, descriptions of the service area, system goals, some improvements that we wanted to see. Those are now a part of the, routine part of the EMS system, have been great changes. The next section is Section 2, which is on page 7. And I'm not going to go into this in any detail because this was information of how the procurement would happen and that's long done. So, but for those of you who have an interest in how that all came about, it's good reading. It was, it was a great process to be involved in. So I'm going to skip ahead here to the RFP, page 17. Maybe I'm going to skip ahead. There we go. That was the qualifications for the bidders. And then on to page 20, the core requirements. Here's, this will be most of my focus for you here. This is really the backbone. This is what every proposer had to attest that they promised to do within the contract. So Part A, so I'm at the top of page 20. The Contractor's Functional Responsibilities. It's the contractor's job to provide ambulance service, continuous service through the term of the contract by providing all ambulance service for residents and other persons physically present in the city at the paramedic level. Just to clarify, every now and then a question comes up. This contract in no way regulates calls that begin in Sioux Falls and, and outside of Sioux Falls, nor does it regulate calls from outside that come into Sioux Falls to be delivered to one of our local hospitals. So just to clarify. Part B, at the bottom of page 20, provides clinical information, describes how medical control is handled. The contractor is to follow the system's medical protocols. Paramedics Plus uses a really, a really good dashboard program that gives Dr. Luther and me continuously updated clinical measures, which we then share with the REMSA Medical Board so we can look at any time at things like, how's care been for heart attacks or strokes or breathing difficulty or trauma, were the scene times appropriate? Were the interventions appropriate? Were the right meds given on any given call? We can actually look at any kind of call and compare it to the interventions so we can look at quality in many different ways. It's very helpful. On page 22, we cover the minimal staffing requirements. So that's number three on that page. All ambulances rendering emergency ambulance service under this agreement, so this is all 911 calls. All those ambulances have to be staffed and equipped to render paramedic-level care. The minimum staffing requirement is one state-certified and locally-certified paramedic and one EMT. And I know there's been a little discussion, wasn't it better when we had two paramedics? We never required two paramedics. Our previous contractor often had two paramedics because that was their available staffing, but it was never a requirement. And a point of discussion, some systems do use two paramedics, but it's not based in research or based in outcomes. Outcome studies show that outcomes are not any better and in fact, sometimes worse when there are too, too many paramedics in a system because no individual paramedic gets as much experience. By, by operating with a single paramedic on an ambulance, they get double the calls, basically, that they're in charge of, and they become very proficient. The state of South Dakota, by the way, has less standards than that. They require an EMT and basically a driver, so we far exceed the state requirements. On page 23, 22 and 23, I guess it is, there's a list of required certifications and trainings for ambulance staff. Credentially, I spend a lot of time on this to be sure that everyone to be sure that everyone has all of the required alphabets, letters after their name, that everyone's attended all the required courses, that their certifications are all current. These are tracked in an online tool at Paramedics Plus and they give me access to that so I can check at any time to be sure that credentialing is up to date. Onto page 24, part C. This describes the operation's core requirements. Starting with an overview of emergency and non-emergency calls. Onto penalty for failure to respond if not canceled. That has never happened in our system. At the top of the next page, the relationship between Metro Communications and the contractor. Metro Communications serves as the primary answering point and communications facility for all emergency and non-emergency requests for service. This was not the case under our previous contract. In the previous contract, 911 calls went to Metro Communications. Private calls were handled through a dispatch center in Omaha and one side never knew quite what the other was doing. And this was a, a service enhancement that Metro Communications very much wanted to see, that they wanted control of all those calls so they knew where all their resources were and what they were doing at any point in time. So that was a, a big system upgrade. This section describes how calls are received and dispatched. Notes that there's a deployment plan for Metro to follow. They don't just deploy ambulances willy-nilly. There's a very specific plan and Paramedics Plus has to create that. And some information about costs and that's also addressed in an agreement between Metro and Paramedics Plus that we're not going to get into or we'd be here for contract two and three and four oh one, I think. At the bottom of that page, page 25, we start our discussion of response times. And I want to just mention a few things about response times. Response times are one measure of quality. Rarely, very rarely do response times matter to outcome. The industry in fact is moving away from this measure. In developing the RFP, our stakeholder group discussed this at length and because the industry hadn't totally abandoned response times as a quality measure, they were included in this contract. I will point out, there's no research that tells us what response time should be. They're set in individual communities based on individual standards or expectations. Historically, there was a, an eight-minute magic number for advanced life support. That's often used still in the industry for cardiac arrests. It was based on research done years ago, even back before I was involved in EMS, really a long time ago, that showed that defibrillation needed to happen with eight minutes, within eight minutes of cardiac arrest for there to be a good chance of survival. That's when defibrillation was only done by paramedics and nurses in the hospital and physicians. Now it's a skill that our laypeople do and Metro Communications can provide instruction for laypeople to use these public access defibrillators. So the public, law enforcement, fire rescue, all have access to defibrillators. So this is no longer an ALS skill. So it really doesn't have any bearing on what should the response time be? But we're left with that kind of as a leftover in the industry. So we still use an eight-minute 59-second response time reliability for 90% of calls for cardiac arrests, for example. It's not research-based. As the industry moves away from response times as a standard of quality, other clinical measures are emerging. Unfortunately, that research is still being done. There is no standard set of ideal quality measures. This is an evolving science. And I will say that as a nurse, it's really exciting to be part of this as it evolves. EMS in five years won't look anything like it does now. In fact, industry leaders that I have talked to have told me they think within even a few years, the whole dividing line between advanced life support and basic life support will go away. Those whole paramedic versus EMT, it's all going to be merged and it's going to look very different. It's, it's an exciting time to see the changes as this industry grows. So back to the RFP. You can turn the page. Page 26 describes the priorities. Note that this information was discussed in great detail at that pre-proposer conference that I mentioned and definitions as well as requirements were updated in that addendum two. So as we talk about these things that are in addendum two, you kind of need to flip back and forth. The RFP itself couldn't be changed. So these, these additions were in this addendum. The last couple pages of addendum two, updated the priorities, the requirements, the penalties, the outliers. So you'll see there are tables five, six and seven. So when you come to those in the RFP, just please note that you need to flip to addendum two for the correct information. To summarize the five priorities. Priority one, I just mentioned, that's potentially life-threatening emergencies. This contract requires that the contractor respond to 90% of priority one calls in eight minutes 59 seconds or less. Priority two is for emergencies that aren't life-threatening. The contract requires that the contractor respond to 90% of priority two calls in 11 minutes 59 seconds or less. Priority three calls are 911 calls that are not emergencies. These do, these do not generate a red light and siren response. Also typically, fire rescue does not go as first responder because these are not time-critical. The contract requires that the contractor respond to 90% of priority three calls in 15 minutes 59 seconds or less. As a side note, this time is as with all the other times. This is not based on outcomes, but rather is a customer service target. The previous contract in Sioux Falls in fact required response for non-emergencies 90% of the time in 19 minutes 59 seconds or less. In analyzing response times under that contract, we found that drive times within the city usually allowed responses with the flow of traffic in about 15 minutes. And so that standard was tightened up as a customer service initiative. Priority one, priority two and priority three are the 911 call response times. Keep in mind that the requirement for these is a 90% reliability. Not 100%, it's 90. There are two more priorities. Priority four is used for scheduled inter-facility transfers and priority five for unscheduled inter-facility transfers. We rarely have priority four calls here in town because most of our facilities don't schedule inter-facility transfers three hours in advance. So most of these are priority five. Priority four requires a response within 30 minutes of the scheduled time. So they can actually be ahead of time or up to 30 minutes after the scheduled time. Priority five requires a response within 90 minutes of the time of call. These are for non-emergencies, inter-facility work. Moving on to page 28, there's a great deal of detail in response time measurement methodology. This is very helpful to me in administering the contract. So I have very specific definitions of when the clock starts, when the clock stops, how we calculate and upgrade. Do you calculate it at the higher response, the lower response? It's all spelled out there. So very helpful and I'm not going to belabor it, but I want you to know that it's there. Page 29, parts, excuse me, page 29 mentions that calls outside the city are excluded from calculation. A good example of that are calls that are done under a contract with the VA. The VA as a separate governmental entity has its own contract for their inter-facility calls and so they're not subject to these requirements. So they are pulled out every month when we calculate response times. The bottom of page 29 of the RFP, number seven. So at the bottom there, we see response time exceptions and exception requests. Just note that the industry uses the term exemption quite often and also the term exception. So you might hear us use them interchangeably. They mean the same thing in our system. So this section by contract notes that some calls are exempted from the response time requirements. It's understood that from time to time, unusual factors beyond the contractor's reasonable control can affect the achievement of specified response times. In calculating to determine compliance, some calls that are exempt are listed at the beginning of page 30. First of all, multi-casualty disasters. We've not had any under this contract, but if there were a declared disaster, response times are not the priority. Adequate resources to handle the disaster are, so. B then for good cause. There are examples given. So calls that could be exempted if requested and approved would be when inaccurate dispatch information is given. If the dispatcher transposed some numbers in an address and didn't correct that. Or more often, if the caller gave the wrong location. You'd be surprised how many people don't know where they are. It does happen. If dispatch equipment totally fails, that could be exempt. A change in location, for example, a moving call, a non-existent address. Exemptions can be given for park-to-trains, which I think you all know happens here in Sioux Falls on occasion. Also weather exemptions. If the weather is so severe that attempting to meet standards would be a greater public safety risk than being late, then we can grant an exemption for a specific call. Also in that section, under good cause, the unusual system overload exemption is defined. Unusual system overload is defined as 200% of the average demand for the day of week and hour of the day calculated annually using the previous year's actual call volume. So in any late call, in review, we, we have a chart of last year's 200% demand by hour of day, day of week. And if the demand for that hour exceeded that, the contractor can ask for an exemption. Interestingly, there's some late reasons that are not exempt that you might think would be. Delays at the hospital. Let's say a crew is transporting someone for a procedure in radiology and radiology is not ready yet. And so they say, just wait. And so they're standing there waiting and another call comes in. I won't grant an exemption for that next call because they were busy waiting at the hospital. So waiting for a bed, waiting to give report in the ER. If an ambulance breaks down, a mechanical problem, that's perceived to be under the direction or the control of the contractor. So no exemptions for items like that. If their crew gets lost on the way to the call because they couldn't bring up the map or whatever, no, no exemptions. Basically, those are things that are within their control and they need to work that out with hospitals. They need to be sure they have the appropriate maps, well-trained crew who can find their way around, so. Number eight at the bottom of page 30 covers how reporting is done. And then page 31 starts the language on penalties. So we're going to get into addendum two again here. Remember, this section changed with addendum two. So table six and seven were replaced by those that are in the addendum. Number two on page 31 talks about within 10 business days, the contractor needs to report to REMSA. And actually, in our system, we go far above and beyond doing that. Rather than calculate response times at the end of the month, Paramedics Plus reviews them every morning and internally. And then we have a conference call every afternoon with Paramedics Plus management, health department staff, Metro Communications, sometimes Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. I know a city counselor has observed this and the city auditor did too as part of the audit process. And on that conference call, every late call is reviewed. The reason that was late was determined. If there's a request for an exemption, the group weighs in on that. Those requests for exemption are pretty straightforward. I so appreciate the objectivity in those measures. It makes my job much easier. System overload is an objective measure. Weather exemptions are rare, but if there's ever a question, we can look up information from the National Weather Service or if there's a question, was this response really delayed by a train? We can check with the railroad, for example. So we follow up on those things. Page 31 of the RFP has a section in the middle of the page B called penalty provisions. And I just want to read this paragraph. City REMSA would prefer that the contractor performances such that no performance penalties would be imposed during the term of the agreement. However, should penalties be imposed, they will be utilized to offset city/REMSA system improvement initiatives. So next we go into some various penalties that can be assessed. Failure to report unseen time. Every now and then, a crew forgets to push their button that they got unseen. We have other methods that they can use to verify when they arrived unseen, including that they radio that they're unseen and so we can listen to the recorder and tell. We also have that PULT software, the automatic vehicle locating, so we can watch the call replay. So AVL can also do that. So we've not had penalties for failure to report unseen time. We could though, and if so, there could be a fine levied. There can be penalties for failure to comply with response time requirements. This is table six, remember, that's replaced in addendum two. So this is if the contractor fails to meet 90% response time reliability for any priority for a month, these fines can be assessed. That has not happened under this contract. If that did happen, there can be additional fines for repetitive non-compliance. At the bottom of page 32 are, are listed the penalties for outlier responses. So outliers are response times that exceed the maximum target for that priority. If exceeded, penalties can be assessed. The listing of the outlier penalties is in table seven in addendum two, which is a second to the last page of that addendum. So I'll just touch on what penalties have been assessed. In 2015, $17,000 in penalties were assessed. The contract and the compliance and reporting was all, we were all getting our legs under us. So there were quite a few penalties. We didn't have a process in place right out of the chute for how to disperse those funds because we had no idea what kind of funds we'd even be talking about. But the contract requires that they be used to offset system improvement. And so the $2015 received were used to offset some of the RFP consulting that was done because part of the RFP was system improvement. So that was the decision made. In 2016, REMSA along with Director Franken developed a process for how to spend any penalty funds. The REMSA Medical Board asked providers within the system to apply for funds and explain how their plan would improve the system. The medical board collected that information, passed it along to REMSA, who then made recommendations to Director Franken. Eighteen hundred, $18,250 was assessed. I know that's not the amount collected, but I calculate it by the month assessed, so. And the money that was collected in 2016 was used for three projects. These basically were like little mini grant applications. It was a great process, actually. First for some equipment at Metro Communications for a conference line to use in disasters. A, a large chunk of the money went to buy additional defibrillators for the police department so they could add them to additional vehicles. So they now have a, a defibrillator in every vehicle, including their motorcycles. And then the third project that was funded was for additional supplies and training at Sioux Falls Fire Rescue for them to expand their capacity. We'll follow a similar process going forward to some, to fund system improvement initiatives using any penalty money received each year. I would point out that I looked at an average. On average, there are between two and three outlier calls a month. We've had months with none, months with more than that. Just over $2,000 a month on average in outliers. Back to the RFP. Page 34 has a table of additional penalties. None of these have been needed or assessed, but you can look at those examples of, of various fines and penalties that can be assessed. At the bottom of that page, 34, we have description of how penalty disputes are to be handled. There have been no penalty disputes. The top of page 35 describes the fleet requirement. And I want to spend just a moment here to just reiterate that we do not determine how many ambulances are in the street at any time. The RFP did require a fleet number. So the contractor had to maintain, has to maintain at least 130% of the peak staffing level. So if they plan to staff a certain number of trucks, take that times 1.3 and that's how many ambulances they need in their fleet. Paramedics Plus initially planned for eight. Going above and beyond, this was an area where they, in the competitive criteria, they exceeded that 130% and they promised 150% peak staffing level for fleet. So they started with eight ambulances in their fleet, but before they even began operations, they upped it to 10. And they continued to maintain 10 ambulances in their fleet. But contractually, I would hold them to eight. So just one of the things I monitor. Section 11, I would point out, these specifications are for a performance-based approach rather than a level of effort undertaking, in, undertaking involving defined locations. We neither accept nor We neither accept nor reject their level of effort estimates, so that peak staffing number, that's up to them. We don't say what that is. RMSA accepts the proposer's commitment to employ whatever level of effort is necessary to achieve the response time and other performance results required by the terms of the agreement and outlined in these specifications. It is up to the contractor to deploy their ambulance resources in a manner consistent with this goal. Continuing on page 35 of the RFP. You guys know this is a 700-page document, right? Okay. Continuing on page 35, there was some information on personnel, how the incumbent workforce was to be treated. That's over and done with, so I'm not going to belabor it. On page 37, some management and reporting requirements. The contractor must provide reports and information needed to monitor contract compliance, and the information that Dr. Luther and I need also to monitor quality of care. I have access online to all reports, in fact, to all information. I have that dashboard available to me to look at quality measures, to assess incident reports. I can look at all complaints, their resolution. Paramedics Plus has been very transparent in making those things available to me. I even have access to their raw data, so I can write my own reports to validate the information they present to me. Page 39 of the RFP discusses the EMS system and the community. This is where accreditation is mentioned. The contractor was required to achieve accreditation within 24 months of the start of the contract, so that would have been May of this year. They actually did that six months early, so that was done six months before it was due. And I would note that they achieved a perfect score on their accreditation by the Commission on Accreditation of Ambulance Services, which is rare and certainly to be commended. They also are required to maintain their accreditation through the term of the agreement, so that's a three-year accreditation, and it won't be long, and they'll be getting ready to reapply because that's how accreditation works. Next, I'll address the first dimension here of mutual aid. On page 39, there's note that the contractor is required to actively participate in EMS activities, committee meetings, work groups, to help develop system changes, and to further develop the system and regional efforts to enhance disaster and mutual aid response. Some of that is certainly accomplished by the work that our contractor is doing with county mutual aid, and I'm not getting into that because this is a city issue, but they certainly are involved in mutual aid contracts or agreements, I guess, in the region. Also, I would like you to flip forward to the RFP, page 64, which says, I'm not going to skip all those pages, we're just flipping forward. At a minimum, the proposer will agree to negotiate in good faith with hospitals, air and ground providers, and execute a subcontract to back up and mutual aid ambulance service in the city. So the RFP requires them to have, to negotiate for mutual aid and to have an agreement. Also, the CAS accreditation requires the provider, any provider who's accredited, to have at least one mutual aid agreement. Paramedics Plus has two, with other Minnehaw County services, Del Rapids and Humboldt, both on file with RMSA. I would note, the state does not require mutual aid agreements. It's kind of an industry thing, a little more based on the really busy corridors on the East Coast, where one community runs into another and they respond into each other's territories with some frequency. That's really a lot of where the industry comes from with mutual aid. Also, to clarify, by policy, Metro Communications dispatches the ambulance they believe is closest when mutual aid is needed. They do not rely on contracts. I know there's been questions about why Paramedics Plus doesn't have contracts with all county services, and by contract, they're not required to. So if there are questions about that, we can get into it more, but I didn't want this to be just about mutual aid. I'm heading back to page 41, so back where we were and flip forward. This is an enhancement in this contract, supply exchange, number six at the top of the page. The contractor will restock basic life support supplies on a one-for-one basis with Sioux Falls Fire. So when Sioux Falls Fire is first unseen, and they put on an oxygen mask and use a bunch of dressings or whatever basic life support equipment they might use, Paramedics Plus has to then supply those back to Sioux Falls Fire. Paramedics Plus and Sioux Falls Fire jointly developed a policy for that and brought it to RMSA, and so that is on file. Page 41, section G, is on administrative provisions. Once again, we reiterate that there is no system subsidy, that no tax dollars go to fund the ambulance service. We describe contractor revenue recovery. The primary means of contractor compensation is fee for service. There's a section here on fee adjustments, and I know you guys have been involved in this, and it'll be coming up again. The contract administrator, that'd be me, reviews annual increases to patient charges based on changes in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, and an annual rate increase will be the greater of 3% or the increase of the CPI for any given year. All changes in fees must then be approved by, they go to RMSA and then to you because you have to adjust fees by ordinance. So that will be coming up probably in July. That'll be a year from last time. In addition to that annual fee adjustment that is specified in the contract here, change circumstances if they substantially impact the contractor's costs of providing service, or if there are reductions in revenue caused by factors beyond the contractor's control, they can ask for a greater rate increase. This has not happened, but certainly what's happening in the industry and with healthcare reimbursement is something that we're watching very closely. If Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement were to dramatically drop, I'm sure there would be discussion about rates because their fees that they collect are the only way they can fund their service. So that process is spelled out if they would come to us and request something greater. Also, if we were to add more stringent requirements, that opens it up so they can come to us for an additional increase in rates. Page 42 gets into some federal compliance, like HIPAA, Medicare/Medicaid compliance, market rights. We note that the city may not enter into agreements with other ambulance services during the term of this contract, and we also will make reasonable efforts to assure the contractor's exclusivity, meaning if we become aware that another service comes into Sioux Falls and does an interfacility transfer, that would have to be addressed as a violation of city ordinance. Billing and collection is discussed, so it's the contractor's responsibility to do billing, and I'm so glad. Ambulance billing is complex. It is not the business that we want to be in unless we would have to be. They can't ask for people upfront for money before transport unless it's like a scheduled out-of-town sort of thing. There are services around the country that do that. They say cash, or we're not taking you, so nothing like that has ever happened here, nor will it. There is a provision, if any contiguous jurisdiction wanted to join this contract, it is spelled out how that could happen. Again, information about accounting, about audits and inspections, financial records, periodic reports, everything that we ask for for monitoring compliance has been provided. There's required insurance provisions, and the current insurance is in effect. That's something I monitor. Page 44 has the hold harmless kinds of things, some information about employee character and fitness, that all employees have a criminal background check before hire and that we can request that those are repeated as needed. I don't believe the state still requires background checks for EMTs or paramedics in the state. It's something that we feel very strongly about, and we implemented many years ago because these are very vulnerable people, and some creep would think that being alone in an ambulance with a vulnerable person would be a great opportunity, and we certainly have never seen anything like that, but we are sticklers about these background checks in order to protect our public. There's also a required performance security bond, that is number 11 on page 44. The contractor had to provide initially upfront a million-dollar performance security, either by letter of credit or by a bond, and they provided a bond, which has been continued and it is in effect now. Section 12 talks about the term of the agreement. It's a five-year agreement. There is a potential earned extension. It is well-spelled out how that would happen, if that were to happen. There's a required performance evaluation. I'm on page 45 now, on number 15. You received that report from RMSA a year ago. You'll be getting it again soon. Basically, the item's spelled out here. We will give you a written document that describes performance. Number 16 talks about default, defines breach. A lot of legal documentation there, but keep in mind that this is a great deal of what I do is monitor for any of these kinds of failures to perform contract. And the process to terminate the contract for failure to perform is well-spelled out. Also, a process if we were to have to do an emergency takeover. If we were to, it's spelled out here that the supplies and equipment stay with us, basically kicks off a lease process if we were to ever have to take over the service. This has happened in some communities, not lately that I'm aware of, but it's something that anybody in my role is well-aware of, and we want to be sure we have really good processes in place. I don't anticipate this will ever happen, but I can sleep at night knowing that it's There's some discussion about transition planning, and then on page 49, a section about lame duck provisions. When any contract like this is getting towards the end of its term, there's certainly risk that quality can suffer, and there's clear expectations here about that we won't tolerate that and what our remedies would be if a lame duck contractor were to allow service to, quality to decline. Continuing on, there's some general contract stuff and some legal language. Some of this duplicates what's in the contract. The next section, section five, this is the competitive criteria, and this basically forms the framework for what the proposer's promised over and above the core. Up to this point, that's all been core requirements. This competitive criteria goes beyond that, and just for your information, this is the proposal that Paramedics Plus submitted, these two binders here. So this is the proposal and the appendices. So I'm not going over all of those, but they're here. They are on sire. The contract and all its documents were initially approved February 10th, 2015, and so all these documents in electronic form are on sire for that day. The RFP goes on to, on page 69, to some budget and pricing info that proposers had to submit. Also, there are some appendices, a table of contents, the old ordinance, some call volume information, required forms. Appendix nine is an interesting one, that specific information on Metro Communications. I mentioned there's a separate contract between Metro Communications and Paramedics Plus that you might find interesting, and if you want a copy, I'll get it for you. The last document making up the contract is Paramedics Plus's proposal. That's those. Many pages, makes the total contract over 700 pages. It is available on sire. I didn't want to ignore that, but it's huge, but I want to point out just three items from the proposal where the contractor proposed going above and beyond the core requirements. One I already mentioned, when Paramedics Plus proposed providing a fleet of 150% of peak staffing, not just the 130% required in the core. The second was Paramedics Plus proposed and then provided the PULT software for use at Metro Communications as a tool to enhance tracking and deployment. I also rely on that to help measure and monitor response times. A third area that's large where Paramedics Plus went above and beyond the core is they committed to use the Baldridge criteria to improve process and outcomes in all areas of their operation. It's been exciting to see that process in action as it's rolled out, and I'll stop there because I could go on and on about that. So that's the contract 101 that I was asked by council leadership to provide. As noted, it's a long and complex contract. Back before Rich Osswell retired, I requested a consultation with him to review the contract and to discuss a plan for how to monitor all the moving parts. That's the process that I put in place. Jill has some additional information for you.
Thank you, Julie. Go ahead and have a seat right there. Welcome, Director Franken.
Hi. I think this is when we say, take a deep cleansing breath in and out. I won't spend too much time giving any final comments. I think the important thing to remember, though, is section 14 of the agreement, which, again, talks about this being an independent business, an independent contracting relationship, that they are contracting to work according to their own methods without being under the control of the city, subject, without being subject to the control of the city. And I say that because, as you can see, while that may be the case, there are tremendous number of requirements that do provide us a lot of actual control, if you will, that was built into the RFP and the contract. And so with that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. I got to thank Julie. As you can see, she is truly a subject matter expert in this area, and we are sure there may be a question or two, so.
Okay, great. At this point, we'll open it up for questions. Counselor Nitzer.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for the great presentation. I didn't weigh in last week because I wasn't here, so I will just say that since the latest set of stories, I've tried to be really cautious in trying to gather facts and learning from somewhat bitter experience in this subject. And the first thing I want to say is behind statistics or people, so with what I'm going to say first, I want to make it really clear, I'm not making a light of any individual cases or questions, and I think people should ask tough questions, but, and I think maybe Julie stole my thunder a little bit, but from my research, something interesting I found, I read that about 6% of patients have a time-sensitive ALS need, but the rest expect prompt service, of course, and that because of that, from what I've read, response time studies show there isn't a statistically relevant impact from response times and patient outcomes. And that's really because so few really have something that's that time-sensitive that a minute or two will make a difference. The big exceptions to that, it looks like, are mostly things like V-Fib, like cardiac arrests of certain types, and then, of course, maybe like choking, but that's a very, but the important thing from that reading about integrated systems is that where you have maybe only six minutes, and then the odds start going way down when it comes to cardiac arrest. We also have a fire department that typically will be unseen in a couple of minutes, and they have the skills, and frankly, now we have, I mean, I can, I've gone through training to use an AED, and so in those rare cases, hopefully, we have somebody with the skills, and we should, unseen quick enough. So that's not to say that something couldn't ever happen, but anyway, I think the response time thing is maybe, I got to be real little careful. There needs to be context, and I hope I added that. Does, is all of that sound reasonably accurate?
I think you probably could have given that part of the presentation, Counselor. Yes, that's very accurate, and that supports, and goes along the lines of what Julie was talking about in her presentation, absolutely.
Okay. And then I'll just ask a couple of questions, and then I'll defer. So the response times, so you go through those every day, it sounds like, and especially the ones that are outside of the parameters. Has there ever been an independent audit of response times, or is that done, or, you know, if anybody has, because really what it comes down to is sometimes people question whether or not the response times are really calculated properly, whether it be one call or overall. Has that been done?
Yeah, actually, it has been completed. When we started doing this, after Rich Osswell helped Julie set up the spreadsheets, almost, if you will, of every single element that has to be monitored, it quickly became apparent to me that, and because of all the interest in that work about a year ago, that we needed to make sure that we've validated through an external party, if you will, outside of our department, the contract compliance monitoring, and that we were, you know, crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. So we did ask for an internal audit. So we did ask for an internal audit to be completed this year, and I believe that's going to be forthcoming yet this month. I think that's about what I should say on that. Is that okay, Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, I did know an audit was coming, and I didn't know exactly the scope, so that's good to know. Okay. And then the only other thing I guess maybe I would ask is, so Julie has complete access to all of the paramedics plus data when they type in everything about the patients and all of the medical records?
Yes.
Do you or does she have, beginning to end, where she can look at what happened at the hospital and final outcomes? Is that data available so you can?
I should have Julie. Yep, go ahead, Julie.
I have some. For cardiac arrests, we get that information automatically because we participate in a cardiac arrest registry. For other calls, I can ask for it on a case-by-case basis and get whatever information I need from hospitals. It's my fondest wish to have that automatically for all calls, and someday we'll get there in our system.
But if you had any concern about how a call went in any form or fashion, you could ask a hospital and that would be provided to you and you could see what the final?
Clearly. Yes, definitely. And if there is a concern, I have relationships with managers at all the hospitals and emergency physicians because several of them are on our RMSA medical board, and so they don't even have to wait for me to ask if they have a concern. They bring it forward to me or to Dr. Luther or to the medical board. We have many ways for that information to get back to us.
That was my other question, was if the, you know, like the manager or whatever it would be in the emergency room had some sort of a question or concern about patient care that they could contact, and you have that relationship where you could go back and review?
Correct. And they might contact me, they might also contact Paramex Plus directly. Paramex Plus keeps all that in an online tool that I have access to. So if any concern comes up, I know about it as soon as they do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Staley.
I've got a few questions. Julie, this is, first of all, for you. You said that when you made the agreement, they're going to have eight to 10 ambulances in their fleet.
Eight initially, that they up to 10.
Okay. But we don't get a guarantee or a number of how many ambulances are on the street at a time.
That's correct. Those methods are up to them.
There could be three, there could be five.
Yes. One day last week, there were seven. Yep.
Okay. Then I wanted to come back to the statement that we're not using any tax dollars for this ambulance service. However, anytime, and maybe, maybe it's not 100% of the time, but when someone calls for an ambulance, how often does the fire department show up?
The ambulance shows up for all priority one and priority two.
Fire department.
The fire department. Is that what you asked?
Fire department goes, okay. So what if the fire department didn't go out on those calls?
I can do that. Yeah, go ahead. In some systems, in other parts of the country, they don't use first responder system like that. They just send an ambulance. Not every place has first responders. It would be a totally different system design, so this whole document would be totally different than it is. There are places where the ambulance service, for example, would use a paramedic fly car who would send out a first responder. There are places where police departments provide that. So there are many, when you've seen one EMS system, you've seen one EMS system. So there could be other ways of doing that.
So we really are using some staff from our city's resources when it comes to helping people in an ambulance situation.
Counselor Staley, you continue to ask questions like that, and I think what you continue to misunderstand is that you are trying to equate that to the ambulance service. That is one component of the EMS system. And we shared that with you, and we explained that to you, and we educated you about that when you first became a counselor. We talked about what is the system design and what is comprehensive best practice EMS system design and what's based on evidence-based. And so the setup that we have where you call 911, the first call for a life-threatening emergency, then leads to police coming to that rescue, then the fire department, and then the ambulance service comes, that is the EMS system. The ambulance service, let me finish, please. The ambulance service is but one component of that EMS system. So I just need to make that clear.
I understand, but let me speak. You've gotten over, you know, almost an hour up here of talking to us, but I think to say that we're not using any city resources to help support the health of our citizens isn't quite accurate because they are, and we hear instances where first responders, which is, and the fire department is actually applying some help to these people. So we need the ambulance system to be a part of this. That's what I'm saying. We do need the ambulance, or, excuse me, the fire department to be a part of this. But my next question is back to the mutual aid thing that you said you didn't want to talk about, but MedStar One, last year, when we had the CEO of Paramedics Plus up here, he told me that they were going to be thinking, working on a contract with MedStar One. Yes, we talked about, that was at issue. If you go back and look at the media, you're going to see that that was at issue.
What was at issue?
Having a contract with Jay's company. Yes, has that been done?
As that was described in the RFP, they are in good faith required to have a mutual aid agreement or S agreements with outlined EMS or ambulance services. They have two. They have one with Humboldt, and they have one with Del Rapids. They put an, they sent a contract to MedStar, but MedStar has refused to sign that. Now, there's a couple of reasons for that that I'm understanding. One is that they wanted to be paid every time they were called for mutual aid. They wanted to be paid an extra fee outside of being able to bill for that service, so they wanted Paramex Plus to pay them. They also are concerned about being under the oversight, which is required of our mutual aid agreements, to be under the oversight of the RMSA board. They have, what I understand, indicated a resistance to being able to be held to the same standards that our current ambulance services.
But we haven't, we don't know that. We don't know what the dialogue is, and the bottom line is, I want to tell the citizens of our community that we have the resources available throughout the whole spectrum of our borders, that we have people ready to come and help if we don't have enough ambulances on the street. I mean, that's just, that's been my thing from the get-go, is the mutual aid agreement. But the last thing I wanted to say, and Julie talked about the good cause cases, it would be beneficial to me if we could get those listed as bullet points, if I could see the cases that you're saying you are forgiving because there's a train in the way or because there's weather, bad weather holding it back. I would like to, you don't have to tell me who the people were involved, but just so we know, we can say, yes, these are the cases that they're not counting against their compliance rate. That, I'm going to put that in as a request.
Director Franken, did you want time to address any of those issues that were brought up by Counselor Staley before we move on to the next question?
I'll give one piece of information here. Exemptions continue to be brought up. I hear about this through media reports, and the only time I've had the opportunity to actually address the council directly about these questions that keep rising up are when council leadership actually sat down with us recently and wanted to know more. Council chair and vice chair did so, and we were able to provide a lot of information. There was actually a FOIA request that was, I believe, provided to our print media about a year ago, and it was on the list of exemptions. They wanted to know every month the number of exemptions, I think, since 2011 or something of that nature. And so we provided that open information of how many exemptions every month. And I just have to share with you that in the last year, Paramex Plus had 340, and please listen, I'm sorry, I don't have these numbers to share with you in any way, but to state them, 347 exemptions were approved last, in this last year with Paramex Plus. Compare that to 387 in the last year that Rome Metro was in service with us.